So Doc, Dr. M.
Yes.
So here's the one thing that you have to put in your.
I'm in my treehouse.
In your. In your Rolodex.
Hold on.
We're having a meeting on Monday, the second or the fourth Monday because Teresa has school board and I have common counsel.
Okay.
Other. So I'm gonna be.
What time is your common counsel?
I am on them simultaneously right now.
It sounds to me like Teresa's gonna do the same thing because that's what she just sent an email. I don't know if you saw that, so. I think that we need to be definitely a little bit more careful when it comes to our scheduling. Give me one second. I'm just gonna try to get my speaker here taken care of.
Tamika, which dates are, are, is the conflict?
Um, the second and the fourth Monday.
Okay.
Anything else I usually am workable, but those are the standard second and the fourth Monday are common council meetings.
All right. We'll do it. We'll avoid that.
I'm gonna call to order.
Yeah, hold on one second here. I'm hearing some weird echo. Hold on one moment and I'll get us started here. Just wanna get this logged in here. Sorry about that. There is the agenda. There we go. Sorry about that. Un momento, por favor. Okay, I am logged into Board Docs and it is now 6:01. So I'm gonna call the meeting to order with a roll call. Tamika Wukwak. Are you here?
Here.
Molly Krytojak?
Here.
Here.
Great. Teresa Seem, uh, who's on mute? Okay, great. And then I see Danielle coming in. So Danielle, you're here?
Yeah, sorry. Hi.
No problem. And then Franklin's here. So we have a quorum. Then item number C is motion to approve the agenda. So is there a motion?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, great. Uh, and then I'll do a roll call vote. All in favor. Tamika? We'll say not there. Aye. Okay. Molly?
Aye.
Okay, Danielle?
Aye.
Teresa?
Aye.
And Andrew votes aye. Motion carried. The agenda is approved. Item 2A, discussion items. Uh, board discussion on the process for selecting firms to facilitate the process of searching for next superintendent. If you wanna take it away, Dr. Moser or?
Yes. What would you say if I said no?
I, I would say you're in breach of your contract and.
I don't wanna talk about this. So, well, it is, it is my suggestion on the, on the litany of items that we need to go through tonight that'll culminate in, the citing on the number of firms that we want to, or you want to interview and which firms you want to interview. My suggestion is that you take the first few moments to give everyone a chance to go firm by firm and make comments to each other about the different firms. Either attributes, any negatives, any just observations, uh, so that all six of you have an opportunity to hear the thoughts of each other on, on the firms. Then we can move into the discussion of, um, how, of ranking the firms, which you have done. And then we can, uh, or even before we do that, we would have discussed the process for selecting, um, the different firms. But let's, I'm getting ahead of myself. Uh, President Franklin, I suggest that we first give all five board members a chance to comment. If you, uh, what you could do is to name a firm and give people a chance to comment on each of the firms. And there may not be any comments on the firms, but I would like, I, I suggest that, uh, all the board members have a chance to, uh, openly discuss each of these firms.
Okay, um, I think in, just in terms of, uh, order, I mean, I, I guess we could do it alphabetical, although, you know, I guess I'd start out and, uh, the, the first one that we had was Crown and Crown is also the biggest one. Um, I will just tell you, I, I, I thought it was a very bulky and perhaps, um, too much so of a proposal, like it overshot the mark. I appreciate in comparison, the firms, uh, that have sent out information that have been more, uh, straightforward, for lack of a better way to put it. I think process and, and approach are really important theme and so forth. Um, the thing that turned me off with, uh, Crown was I just felt like there was too much of focus on, on paradigm or big P process, um, and trying to elevate the search. Now, I say that and I think it's really important to do two things. One is to ask the right questions and two is find, you know, the right match. You know, ultimately, not just with the firm, but with whoever the candidate is. And so I think that there was a lot of information that Crown provided that I thought would be, you know, helpful to that. I did also think that, um, there was a little bit of attention, uh, more than a little bit focusing on results, on, uh, the process, on children. But I, I just felt like, um, it, it was not speaking to me. Um, it was maybe, uh, not personal to the district, just in terms of the size. And I just thought that while there were some very important, uh, things here, for me, frankly, I tuned out on it. And I thought that, you know, if, if I'm tuning out on what it is that they're trying to say, I'm not sure what the effort is, you know, going to be, you know, from, from the company to try to bring people in. I, I just, you know, I, I, I consider myself pretty sophisticated reader, being an attorney and so forth. I, I just felt like, uh, as a whole, the proposal spoke to something maybe beyond what we were doing. So that was my thoughts on it. That's not exactly scientific, but those were kind of my initial impressions. And as I go through it again, I mean, I, I think it was very professional. I think it was, you know, very thorough, but I, I also, I, I also suspect that, uh, they have their own processes in place and it makes me wonder, you know, i- if we're gonna have that individualized attention. Um, so maybe that's not scientific, but that was my impression of reading the proposal.
Can I go next on that one?
Yeah.
I gotta sneak in when I can.
Yeah, please.
I kinda agree exactly with you. This is my least favorite.
Me too.
Um, I thought it, I was looking at something that's different than what you guys were, I think. Um, I saw no diversity plan. I didn't even see any diversity in the people that they send the, the, um, um, the invite to or the job proposal. Um, I thought they nickled and dimed. And I'm not sure about this theme based, um, because it can put people into, um, institutional racism, doing a theme rather than value based, which could be just a different word, but that's what I thought of that. So this is my least favorite. Go ahead.
Uh, it was also my least favorite and so we don't need to belabor it, but I thought they didn't offer, some of the other, um, firms offer some additional services wrapped in. And like you said, that they kind of added things, um, like additional supports, but at an extra cost, which I wasn't too keen on. So they were my, they were my least favorite as well.
Uh, Molly, did you have anything that you wanted to add, one way or the other?
I gave it a six. It was my least favorite.
Yeah, Crown.
Wait a minute. Are we agreeing on something? Oh, off the bat. Woo-hoo.
Wow. Um, you know, and look, I mean, this is a public meeting, right? And we're not, I, I, I don't wanna be unfairly critical of them. And I think it's really important to also add, um, that I, I appreciate the time and because I work on this and maybe there's just something kinda, you know, keep in mind. I, I do this for a living. I, I deal with proposals. I go through, you know, documents. I, uh, I, I try to understand what the selection criteria are and so forth. And it's not an easy thing. And, um, the, the best companies sometimes, uh, just don't hit the mark the same way that other company, that maybe one time, uh, company hits the mark the right way for the right person, doesn't always happen that way. So, you know, I, I wanna just make sure that at the outset, we don't cast dispersions on, you know, any individual firm, uh, but rather that we, you know, we're, we're just talking about how, what our reactions are. Uh, and, and what we're looking at. And I think that that's impression and that's opinion. Um, and, uh, for whatever it's worth, I certainly don't wanna do anything to, you know, to criticize, uh, Crown. And I, I know that they do a lot of work. So I'm sure that, you know, they're, you know, a very good firm, but I guess I would also say, um, that's about.
On the Public Works Building.
Uh, that, that's about as much as, uh, we can add. Um, I think that we've got, uh, near unanimity on that, huh?
Um, President Franklin, did Teresa, is she on? Did she wanted to add anything?
Teresa is on, but she's in the middle of another meeting and she asked me not to make the comment, uh, at this time. So I, I did skip over her, uh, just based on her message request to me.
Are, are you guys getting like background noise?
Yeah, I am. I, I don't know if there's someone else in here who's got a microphone on.
What happened is when I have to answer my other call, I'm pushing in between. So I'm gonna try to fix it correctly, but.
Yeah.
This.
Yeah. And by the way, apologies to both you and to Teresa. It's, it's a busy night for meetings. Uh, so, you know, we are happy that you guys are able to provide what you can. Um, all right, then I guess, uh, alphabetically, the next one is, uh, HYA, right? Which is Hazard, Young, Ataya Associates. I don't have to go first, you know, all the time. I, I'd like to let someone else, uh, go around. So, you know, Tamika, if you're not free, I can move on to Molly and ask Molly what your thoughts are.
Sure. Um, my thoughts of this are that, you know, there are a couple on here that we have, uh, that have, that districts have paid a lot of money to, to find and then they hire someone down the block. And my first impression of this one is that they ended up hiring, uh, someone from down the block to be their new superintendent. So I, I just wanna make sure, so my concern is that, um, that they, they would not, I would hope that they would spread out a little bit more their tentacles in terms of looking for people farther than 53211 or whatever to get, um, a good candidate. That being said, they have worked within our neighborhood and, um, I didn't put them low on the list. I really, um, I thought favorably of them in terms of their proposal and their experience.
Okay, Danielle?
Yeah, so they act, they were lower on my list. Um, I had a similar thought as Molly. Um, I thought that in terms of cost, that there were a lot of things where maybe other firms were at it, were including that, and these would be additional, um, fees for them. They did have a lot of experience, um, in terms of like transition support and support beyond the search. I don't think they offered as much as other firms. And what they did offer came at a hefty price again. Um, and then their guarantee was not quite as, uh, solid to me as the other, as, as some of the other firms that ranked higher. Um, they guaranteed a superintendent for one year for any reason, but two years, only if a majority of the board is still in place. And the person leaves for dissatisfaction, not personal or familial reasons. I thought, you know, to me, the, the firms that gave me a little bit more confidence were the ones that had those, you know, two-year guarantee will repeat the process that are including some of the extra stuff to support the transition, um, to support the board, to support the new superintendent. So, um, this one actually was, uh, was fifth on my, on my list.
Okay. Uh, I'll ask, uh, Tamika.
Uh, this was number four on my list. I, it was so, it was just mediocre to me. Nothing major stuck out. I think we have better candidates. It wasn't bad. It just wasn't, it was just right. It was number four for me.
Okay. Um, yeah, you know, and I, I struggled. So for me, um, my top four were relatively close. I, I had two that were relatively close for top two. There were two that were relatively close in the middle. And this is one of my middle ones. And I, you know, I had it at a three. Although, you know, I mean, I'll, I'll, I'll keep it at three just because that's how I marked it on my mind. I think there were some things about it that are good, um, that, you know, Danielle, you touched on some of this stuff, which I thought was really important. Um, things about the guarantee, things about the fees, which I saw were addressed in some of the other, uh, position and some of the other proposals a little bit better in terms of clarity. I, I didn't have the clarity on what those fees were or what the transition. I, I'll tell you that this idea of support services was an interesting thing to read through with the other proposals, uh, as well as this one. And actually, I had a brief conversation with Dr. Moser in which we talked today just about how it's really important to have some sense of, uh, transition so that there's consistency between the board that hires and the board that, uh, uh, you know, works with, uh, the administrator in the first year. And I know you can't always control that, but I, I guess to be fair, uh, if the board changes, you know, three members in a year, maybe that's some pretty significant departure. On the other hand, um, I don't think that that's a huge likelihood. I, I thought it was an odd thing to, at least not to have more of a broad statement in terms of a guarantee. And, uh, that being said though, I thought it was a competent proposal. Um, I, you know, and by the way, full disclosure, uh, you know, Dr. Jerome was my principal at Nicolai, Sarah Jerome, who was, uh, there before, uh, Dr. Moser was. Uh, I, I knew her and I, I think she's a perfectly, uh, wonderful person and she's one of the first people, you know, who reached out when we announced that Larry was, uh, retiring. So, uh, there are some things that I appreciate in that respect. Um, I do note that they worked with Mapledale. I did talk to the president over at Mapledale, Brian Janess, and, uh, he was very happy with, uh, how things turned out for Mapledale, uh, with their new district administrator. Um, so, so that does weigh with me, uh, a bit. And, you know, that being said, there's a couple of firms that are close and Mapledale, um, you know, it's a couple of cool school districts. They, Mapledale, uh, in West Dallas, that, uh, they pointed out they had fuller resumes and CVs, which I thought was also helpful, but, um, I, I do think that we could have had a little bit more of a statement about the candidate pool, a little bit more statement about diversity. Um, and so with that, I put them at a three, but, you know, between them, another firm, it was really three slash four. But, uh, again, I, you know, and as we're getting closer, maybe into the middle, we're gonna have to decide about, um, what, uh, you know, about how many firms we're gonna wanna bring back, uh, for an interview. And I mean, for me, I guess my attitude is, and this is just something to consider, which maybe we don't have to address at the moment, is I wouldn't put them out of the running necessarily. I, I would wanna give them an opportunity to come in because they probably have some experience in the community and, and they know some things. So it might be worth it to give them a fair shake as, as one of the firms to, to, you know, to be part of the interview. By the way, um, we skipped over any comments from you, Dr. Moser, on, uh, the last one on Crown. So, uh, I would ask, and without skipping over on Teresa, who I, I think is probably not gonna be able to join in, but if you have comments on Crown or on, uh, on HYA, uh, I would love to hear them. I think the board would as well. Or on their proposal.
Well, my only comment on Crown is I do know the owner of, of that firm. That's all I wanna say. I, I, um, I, I know him. And, uh, on Hazard, Young and Ataya, I do know both of the, the firm is out of Chicago, but the two consultants that would be assigned to the Glendale River Hills search, I do know them. They're both, um, uh, former, uh, either, uh, superintendents, uh, in, uh, in Wisconsin, in the metropolitan area, and I know them very well too. Beyond that, I don't think, I think you, you as a board member, uh, board members have said everything that needs to be said, but I, just so you know, I know those consultants.
Okay. That's good. So then just to kinda confirm where we're at for HYA, I had a ranking of three. Tamika had a ranking of four. Danielle had a ranking of five. And then Molly, I didn't hear from you.
Three.
Three. And did you have anything else to add?
No.
Okay. All right. Uh, next one, alphabetically again, is McPherson. Uh, I am just trying to pull this around and, uh, let's see, I, I think we can probably start with you, Danielle.
Okay. Um, so I, my top three all could have been interchanged basically, and they were in my top three. I liked how sort of involved and hands-on it felt like they would be with the board, helping us through the process. I liked their experience. I liked that their advertisements were included in their costs and that they seemed to be diverse and thorough. And the application requirements is, as well. A down, I mean, the, their references, I guess I would wanna know more about if we decided to interview them. And, you know, I didn't know if the districts that they used as references are sort of comparable to ours or those would be good. Those make good comparisons, but I liked that their consultant was local. Um, and I liked their guarantee. And I liked that they update, they would help us update the job description and help us negotiate and develop the contract. Those were sort of a couple of extra things. I think some firms didn't necessarily advertise that they would do and that the consultant could also attend the interviews. So I just, I was, I liked their proposal. I was drawn to it. They were in my top three.
Okay. Well, let's go to Tamika. Okay, I gotta know there. How about Molly?
Uh, actually, this was my number one pick and to be truthful, all the other ones, I, I clumped into two categories with this one being like my number one. Um, I really thought that the proposal itself was, um, well thought out and I, I agree with Danielle about the references. However, I think that looking at the professional experience of the consultant who taught in Sheboygan, who, which in, in 95 was, was certainly diverse. So he has experience, um, there. And I just, I, I feel as though this was a really good proposal and I liked the fact that the fees included everything. There are a lot of other proposals that gave like a fee and then add-ons. And I, I, I don't think we wanna spend our time nitpicking what add-ons we want to, um, pick, you know, like a, like a wedding. So I just thought that this, I really, really liked this proposal and I definitely gave this, um, this for my number one, my number one draft pick.
Yeah, it was my number one too. Um, and, uh, there are a number of things for it. Um, I think, you know, one thing that I'd like to, I like to see personalization. Frankly, I would love to see more personalization, uh, of all of these. Uh, but, you know, their first page really focuses on kids, uh, as I look at it again. About, uh, and also addresses transparency, communication with stakeholders. So for me, they put that front center and that was the first thing that I saw in their proposal. I saw, and by the way, they and all these other firms seem to have a lot of experience, a lot of staff, a lot of people available. I don't know how it all fits together, but I think that in terms of experience, in terms of, uh, years in business, finding and, uh, bringing people together. I mean, I think all of them are really, you know, at the hundreds of level. Um, I, I think that one concern that I have is that it feels like a lot of what they do is rural. There's a lot more rural areas, but then again, they also had Green Bay in there. Um, and, uh, West Bend, I don't know how rural that is, but, I, I worry about all these actually, but then again, we're in Wisconsin and we may get people from all over. So, uh, I'm not so worried about that. Um, I do like that they had, uh, a good layout in terms of what their phases were. And I really liked, uh, the guarantees in, in big, uh, letters. They have the two-year, uh, guaranteed process. And, uh, they don't actively recruit to pretend to have been placed in our searches. Um, there are some that, uh, don't do it for five years. And that's an interesting, you know, thing to look at. Um, I don't know that you necessarily ought to ban someone from being part of the search, but I do like that they, you know, don't seek them out because the idea is that they're trying to find a home, uh, one would hope. Statistics I like. Um, and I like, in, in my top, uh, several firms, what they said here is over the last five years, 70% of administrators were in the same positions for which they were hired. That's pretty good. I, and, and there are a couple of the other firms that have similar rates, but, uh, I, I don't know how it all shakes up, but a 70% rate over five years, I think is, uh, I think first of all, it sounds like it's at least standard, but I'm glad they put it in there. Um, and then 40% within the last 15 years. The other thing that I really liked about it, um, which spoke to me is that they had a defined set of responsibilities. So they had defined responsibilities for Glendale River Hills. They had defined responsibilities for them. And I think that that, whether or not that's, you know, the template or it changes, I think that that's a good thing to have because it provides some predictability. So I, I, I do like that. It seems that they're gonna be a firm that hopefully is one to work, uh, through. I would like to get, um, a little bit more detail, um, you know, in terms of that and in terms of some of the references. Um, I don't recall if it was in the McPherson, uh, application or not, but there were a couple of firms that offered a visit to, you know, the home districts where the candidate comes from. Um, that's something to look at. But I, I, I like the proposal and we're looking just on the proposal right at this stage. They were definitely my number one there.
Okay, I'm gonna go real quick. Um, this one was, uh, number two for me. And it, the reason they, it wasn't one, but, and I think it's very important, number two is because of where they've done their searches. It's, um, regardless if they do it around this area, we do have a 50-plus percent kids of color. And even though they did it at Mapledale. And even though they did it at Mapledale or wherever it is in any of these proposals, there is a part of me that really wants them to have more diversity. I like their diverse, they made a purpose. They purposely wrote something about diversity in the proposal and their hiring process. So this is number two for me.
Okay. Dr. Moser, did you have anything that you wanted to add?
Just briefly, the comments about helping with a contract, that's important. You're going to need that, you're going to need help. Either it's going to be, you're going to pay an attorney to help you with extra money. Or the, the search firm will give you help. They need though, to make sure that they, in the contract, speaks to Wisconsin law and Wisconsin standards. Because Wisconsin is different than other states in contracts. And I, and I thought the comments that were made by the board dealing with job description, that's an important process. Because, you know, of course, you know, I, we, we might, might be able to do it together. But having a firm have assistance on that is, is a good idea, too.
And by the way, oh yeah, and just to speak to that, too. I think that if I'm not mistaken, they had their primary contact with someone out of Ooseburg, if I'm not mistaken. They're somewhere about an hour north, if I'm not mistaken. But their, their firm is out of Nebraska, the headquarters is. So I mean, just, I think that that's what you were speaking to, Elliot. All right. So moving along, the next one in our list, I have a School Exec Connect. So I will just, before we do that, though, I just want to make sure I'm not skipping over Teresa, in case Teresa's texted me, but no. All right. Then I guess Tamika, School Exec Connect, or do you want me to pass?
Um, no, I can do it now. There you go. This one, full disclosure.
I'm sorry, Ray and Associates. I apologize. I'm doing alphabetical and I jumped over Ray and Associates. I apologize.
This is my number one. Yes, I thought them, it was hard because I was going back and forth, but this is my number one. There's a couple of drawbacks to this is the expense, the expense aspect of it, which is that the cost is not that bad, but the little nickel and diming. But if you look at the schools they have, have dealt with, the fact that they, they recruit in different organizations and not just the National School Board Association, but also, you know, Alliance for Black Schools, the Women's Latinos, they, they recruit from all over, which I love that aspect of it. I thought it was plain and simple to read. I like that they're, even their breakouts are plain and simple. I love the stages. This was, this was actually my favorite one. And like especially what the board has to do compared to what, you know, their associates have to do and when we're doing it. And the, the last thing, I, I think I still have to go back to making sure we get the right person so that, that brings the, the aspect of, I like their, their racial statement as well. So, and I think that is my key of why I'm on the board, to bring that part of it. I think it's the whole package. If I had, it was between one and two on these two. So between Ray and McPherson, they're interchangeable with me.
Molly?
Uh, I gave it two. Just aesthetically, I gave it a two. I just, again, I am not real pleased with these proposals that don't just give a flat fee. Again, I don't think we want to waste our time picking where we're going to spend our add-ons. That seems just like a lot. But I do like, I, I've always been pleased with the proposals who split up the duties and are very clear about who is doing what. I like that the stages are well thought out and clearly defined. And I also appreciated their taking the opportunity on page 12 to talk about their points of experience and time of COVID. I think that, that addressing that and like, as a page and not just a footnote was important to me as well. So yeah, got a two for me.
Yeah. So I'd echo a lot of what has been said. They were again in my top three. All of my top three were sort of interchangeable. Their statement on social justice, equity and inclusion stuck out to me. They're specifically highlighting COVID. And while they are on the higher end of costs, I do think that would go down because I think this cost, at least this would be something to inquire about. But I think these costs are sort of not thinking COVID-related. And I think some of it may go down. And hopefully we could determine advertising upfront, so we would just know our cost, kind of like Molly was saying. It would be nice to just not sort of worry about that. I had some questions for them that I would like to ask, but I would definitely like to interview them. They were in my top. I liked their guarantee. And yeah, I liked how clearly they laid out roles, responsibilities, included, you know, community stakeholder input. I was, I was impressed with this proposal.
Okay. So I had, you know, and I'm grappling through it again, too, because I've hemmed and hawed on this a little bit. And so what I like about it, by the way, Molly, you're right. I mean, they have a statement on COVID-19, they have a statement on diversity and inclusion, which I think is really important. You know, and I'm going through it again. And I mean, it looks like they've been involved in a lot of different searches. But honestly, it just, there's no context to any of it in terms of, you know, when they did searches, who they did searches for, what the results were. The first couple of pages, just to me, it's, it's a lot of information. I appreciated the historical statement and the staff information. I did think that the pricing was a little bit of a, you know, and I hate to say this and be off the cuff, but I just thought it was a lot of information, a lot hard to follow in terms of, you know, what the inclusions were. And ultimately, you know, it's a pretty high price that they're proposing. They only have three references in here that they wanted to have. They say specifically it's not a complete list. But the list that they have is from Michigan, Ohio, and then Berlin, Wisconsin, not New Berlin, Wisconsin, but Berlin, Ohio. And so for me, it was a bit of a mixed bag. And keep in mind that for me, the difference between one and four is not so great overall. I mean, I would still be interested in talking to them, but they were my number four choice. So. And Teresa, are you there? Okay. And Tamika, did you, I think you had a chance to speak. So, all right. Dr. Moser, I'll give you an opportunity.
Okay, the only thing I would say, this applies to every, all the firms is, but I think we want to do a good reference check on this firm. And keep in mind, one of the most embarrassing things for a school board is to have a search firm bring in candidates. And, and the candidate, and the candidate that's selected, it's found out that there wasn't good vetting done on a candidate by the search firm. If, let's say, our PTO, our teachers' union, if our foundation, whoever. It's very, very common in the school business that somebody outside of a school board will check references. They'll check to see if the board did their homework and it's very embarrassing. I, I would want to make sure that we would check on the record of this firm and all the firms. Of how many, if they had people that they didn't vet properly and there were surprises that we just want to avoid that.
Okay. All right. Then our last one, I guess I can start out. It's School Exec.
Are there two more left?
Oh, I'm sorry, second, I'm sorry. There, there are two. Wasby, I'm looking at both of them. School Exec Connect. Let me start out. Unless Tamika, you have a moment, you can do it.
Yeah, let me start because I'm really going between the two. Full disclosure, I know the superintendent of, the superintendent of Shorewood was my principal and he's the, one of the partners on here. This is number three for me. I thought the cost was good. I was a little concerned about where they post. There's no diversity in regards to that, but most of the people that work there are from North Shore. You know, or have dealt with North Shore. So that's where my three is. They're, I'm wondering why they're coming in so low, which concerns me, too. I mean, it's not even an average. But they are number three for me.
Okay. For me, they were number two. But again, I mean, keeping in mind that this is kind of a very close distance here. What I liked is, on the one hand, that, you know, they had reference districts and they were very close to us, right? There was Shorewood, there's Fox Point Bayside, there was Brondear, there was Germantown, there was Nicolay. And I also liked the fact that they have some local people on their staff. As a matter of fact, Dr. Deborah Kerr, she was superintendent in Brondear, and I think she had just retired, too. Now, I, I don't know if that necessarily, you know, gives her a lot of quality one way or the other, but she definitely knows the area. And I think that that's a bonus if she, if she in fact is one of the people who's going to be working with us. I am confused a little bit actually, too. And I guess this is something more for, you know, talking with Teresa actually about, but I was looking at the, the timing of the search district and I don't know, Dr. Moser, if you know offhand, but like Nicolay High School District, your search was 2018, 2019, which was when we hired Dr. Kavara, if I'm not mistaken. No? 2018, 2019? I guess I don't know what the circumstances were of that search or, you know, the Fox Point Bayside search. Because, you know, I, I'm just thinking in terms of who the superintendents were that I knew at those times. So I guess I have some question about, you know, what, what they were doing during those timeframes. But nonetheless, they've worked with districts that comprise people in our neighborhood. So I would hope that that would help. I thought that they had a very straightforward approach as well, a very straightforward proposal. And I mean, I think that that was, you know, just really, that was the big stuff for me. They did have a lower fee and I, I, you know, I don't know if it's come out as I've talked about this. For me, fee has been, for the most part, secondary. I mean, I've been very keen about very high fees. I've been very keen about itemizing additional costs. And yeah, I mean, I think maybe it's a blessing and a curse to have a low dollar fee. But it's enough to get me interested in at least working with people, given that they may be more familiar with our district. Now, that may be a blessing and a curse, that, you know, may be viewed in a number of different ways. But for me, they were my number two. Molly? Actually, I'm sorry, Danielle. Oh, sorry. Let's go Danielle.
Go ahead, Danielle.
Okay. Well, their fee is not the lowest. But, and then, and one thing is that their advertising costs, I don't believe are included. And so I took Tamika's point that they don't have a lot of diverse places they advertise, but it also says that it's up to the board. At least that's how I understood their proposal. It'd be up to the board where we would advertise. So we could perhaps supplement that and that would also increase the cost. I, I was drawn to the fact that they've worked with neighboring districts and that their personnel would know our areas well. I just had a lot of question marks, though, in terms of some of the things we asked for in the RFP. You know, are they going to work with us to help us develop evaluation tools for the superintendent? Or negotiating the contract, some of the things we've already talked about, job description, et cetera. So those would be questions I would have of all the firms we interview, but sort of especially them to better understand their role in the process and our role. I didn't feel like that was as clearly defined as some of the other firms, but they are in my top three. And again, my top three were sort of, could all be interchanged. So I was, I was drawn to this proposal. I liked their guarantee, but I would have a lot of sort of follow-up questions on the details for an interview.
Okay. Molly?
I have a question for Dr. Moser.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry. What would you rank, Danielle? I apologize.
So, but my top three, I couldn't, honestly.
Okay, 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 okay. Molly, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
That's all right. Okay, Dr. Moser. It has, that it was a firm for Nicolay for 2018, 2019, but was this firm also involved in either Dr., do you know if this firm was involved in Dr. Monroe's search?
Uh, they were not.
Okay.
They were not.
I'm glad I asked that clarification. So I guess my only concern is, first of all, I just, I labeled it as my fourth choice. Only because it just, the proposal itself lacked some substance. So it was really hard for me just to make an assessment because I just, it was hard for me to really glean from even the phases like, who would be involved in which part and, and board versus their, their firm. And I, I just, it just, it lacked some meat that I was looking for in terms of making a, a decision about this. I see it the past part, it's color-coded between board and joining consultant, but I, again, I just feel like it just was missing some information that I was looking for. So I guess I just would have some questions if we were to interview them.
Sorry, I had one more thing. A concerning part of this for me, for them, was that they only do a background check on your finalist. So sort of speaking to what Dr. Moser had said about properly vetting, you know, candidates and references and things like that. I would, my initial concern is, would we be interviewing candidates that for whatever reason, would not make it through that final process if they hadn't been thoroughly vetted or had any of those kinds of checks done earlier in the process? So I guess I would want to talk to them about why that is, whether that's negotiable, too.
All right. So Molly, if you had to put a number on it, you said four?
Yep.
Or, okay. And then I guess our last one then. Molly, if you want to kick us off on Wasby?
I gave Wasby a five. And really, a lot of it for me was, again, the, your menu plan in terms of, you know, what add-ons you needed. But, and I also just looked at the different districts that they worked with and conducted superintendent search since 15, 16. And there just lacked such diversity in that group of, of schools. And I also think they're, they're not very urban or even suburban schools. So that's why they got my five.
Tamika?
Give me two seconds.
Danielle?
You're a four for me, but I guess even as we're talking, I might move HYA up and they might be four, five. I don't know. So yeah, I just wasn't, nothing really stood out to me as. So, um, yeah, I just wasn't, nothing really stood out to me as, um, uh, just being unique enough for sort of meeting our, I didn't, if it didn't go far enough in terms of diversity, I think Molly, you kind of nailed maybe what I was missing. Um, and I just didn't see any additional services or things included that would have put them over the ones that I was more drawn to, I think. So just didn't feel, I, I, I'm open to perhaps talking to them, but they're lower down on my list for sure.
Okay, Tamika?
Yeah, I'm ready, um. Dude, between this one and Crown, I was trying to figure out which one was going to be my last place, but I gave them the fifth because they're from Wisconsin.
Yeah.
Um, the, the à la carte is what did for me, number one. The per hour, um, rates. Um, number two, out of them being in Wisconsin, they have not touched any of the major diverse cities, like Milwaukee or Green Bay or, or Racine or anything. I'm a little nervous about that and me being the Wasby representative, going into, um, some of their meetings. I, I have to, um, kind of argue with their point of views on diversity or how they see things. So they are not my number five. Close to a six, but I gave them five because they're from Wisconsin.
They're my number five as well. Um, and look, uh, let's, let's just take a step back. Wasby is a, a good organization and, uh, I, I get the sense that maybe what they're doing here is trying to provide a service, maybe I'm wrong, to smaller rural districts. Um, you know, uh, that may be on a budget, uh, uh, approach. Um, I, I said that I do deal with a lot of proposals and contracts and when you have time and materials, right? Hourly rate, it doesn't really get you the incentive to get, you know, across, uh, the starting, uh, cross finish line rather. Um, get you over the starting line, but not, you know, to the end of it. Um, and so, uh, I think that it really does speak to trying to do, you know, less, or at least doing more, you know, with, with less resources. Um, that's not to say that we have all the resources in our district, but that is to say that I, I think that you want to, uh, have a plan and a strategy and, um, a, a set fee or at least, you know, have an idea of what it's going to be. Um, I mean, frankly, I thought it was a, a pretty, you know, decent proposal otherwise, but I, I just didn't see a lot of heft to it and I guess I, I would have, uh, expected something more. Uh, given that it's School Board Association. So I, I, I agree, it's, it's low on my list as well, um, number five. And Dr. Moser, um, I, I guess my question for you is, uh, if you had Teresa's rankings at all. You know, I, I'm working on a little table here and I, uh, I know she's not able to participate fully, but I know that she did send you her comments, um.
Excuse me, Andy?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Someone please let me into the board meeting. I'm switching from computer to, thank you. That's what I wanted. All right.
Sorry, all right, great. Sorry, Dr. Moser.
Sorry about that.
I do have Teresa's rankings.
Yeah.
Yes.
If you could share them.
Sure. Well, may I suggest, suggest we move to the next segment? Which would be, I, I, I'm going to suggest that, that either you or Karen would form a spreadsheet. Where on the, on the vertical and horizontal scale, uh, we would, by you, we would have the rankings, uh, for example, we'll go to Danielle and she'd say, uh, uh, who her number one is, number two, and give a point value. And it'd be a golf score. And we could see how the, the firms ranked on a golf score with one being the best, six being the worst. And then accumulating the points and you can see how many firms you want to hire off of that. That way, everybody has an equal chance, all the board members have an equal chance to express themselves. I think you all have ranked them.
Hold on one second and let me ask if you like what I've done here, because I just got permission from Karen sharing my desktop, so. Uh, let's see here, if you can see it. Uh, shoot, I don't know if she's freezing up here now. I do have one here, uh, uh, there we go. Okay, can you see?
Not yet.
No.
No? Oh, shoot.
I can't see it.
Try it again, like.
Okay.
Share and then stop sharing once.
All right, I'll try that again. Uh, shoot, and now.
President Franklin, in the meantime, Danielle had a question.
Yeah, well, I was just going to say, if I, which I would, I think switched my Wasby and HYA ranking. If I'm recalling, it sounds like we all put Wasby and Crown in the first positions. Which means that we agree our top four are Ray, Exec, McPherson and HYA in no particular order. So not to circumvent or shortcut the process, but if those are our top four, if we want to interview four, we have somewhere to move from, we want to interview less, then we'd have to sort of break down our rankings. So I don't know if that would be helpful to just.
I would be fine with that. If that's, if that's what the board would like to do and it doesn't, it would appear. The only thing, uh, it, let me verbally relay, relay Teresa's.
Yes, and Andy, can you swap mine, my HYA and my Wasby?
Your HYA and your Wasby, okay, so this will be a four and this will be a five? And then I'll just make this a one, two or three.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, all right.
Um, are you ready for Teresa's?
I am.
Okay. Uh, Teresa ranked the WASB number one. You pressed for it.
This is like the match game. All right.
She ranked, uh, um, McPherson number two.
Okay.
Uh, School Exec Connect, number three.
Okay.
Uh, Crown Global was number four. Uh, Raid Associates, five.
Okay. Okay.
The Hazard Young and Attia, six.
So.
He's an outlier.
I know, I wish I could hear, hear why to see if it would.
Well, she has some notes. Would, would you like me to read?
Please.
I, I have some, we could start with, uh, WASB specializes in Wisconsin, vested interest in keeping superintendents in Wisconsin for the benefit of Wisconsin schools, cost less than $8,000. McPherson and Jacobson, uh, short concise proposal, um, she, uh, they've checked the box for all the tasks. School Exec Connect, uh, not to exceed $900 on expenses, short concise proposal. Cool. Love the life themes-based search. Raid Associates, love references to emphasis on social justice, eliminating systematic racism. Uh, but had, uh, at least one misspelling, uh, in the proposal. Hazard Young, um, uh, the, she mentioned the cost, uh, and she likes the community survey from Hazard Young.
Danielle, you're going to have to make your decisions. I can't like.
Sure, sure, all right. Uh, McPherson one, Raid two, School Exec three.
Okay, you're just doing that to make everything easy, but I appreciate that.
Yeah, it's, everybody else had to, I was going to say, we all had to do it, so.
All right, so.
So Andy, what the process would be to go horizontal and add up the points?
That's exactly what I'm doing.
Oh, he's averaging tickets.
Oh, I am averaging because, you know, statistics, nine, 13, 16. Why not? So here, what I see, okay, I mean, I think that McPherson was the clear winner here. Um, I think that, you know, then there were these other two that were definitely in the top, uh, three. So McPherson, Ray and School Exec Connect, and I'm just going to make all those green. So then, uh, we have Wasby, Hya, or HYA and Crown. Um, I would like to suggest that, uh, we have a debate about HYA versus Wasby. I mean, I, I, I guess the question is, and if Teresa was here, she would see, you know, uh, she'd be able to talk about standard deviation and, and whatnot. But I think that Wasby, her ranking was the outlier here. Um, I think that we ought to take HYA. I mean, maybe we, we don't take HYA, maybe we just take only top three firms, but we ought to discuss.
What's the, on those two firms, what are the total points?
Uh, on HYA, the total, uh, I'm going to double my, and check my math again, it's 420, so, uh, it's, uh, it, total is, uh, 20 for HYA. Uh, and.
I'm sorry, what, how many, Andy?
Well, I mean, HYA is slightly higher by average than Wasby. Uh, you know, the ranking for Wasby.
Twenty-one, it's 20 and 21, so the lower golf score, HYA.
You have 21 being the lower score, mind you, the golf score.
Twenty, yes, right.
So I think my personal opinion, we take the top four, call it a day, because here's the thing. We all kind of agreed on one, two, three in some way. Four is that iffy one, that some people had it higher, some people had it lower, but they had questions about it. Not many people had questions about Wasby or Crown. I mean, I understand what Teresa said, but it's still, you know, out of five people, one, two, three, four have it as number four or five, or six, or four even. I just think we should literally grab the top four, which is the average, and call it a day because it's so. Or we can do three and cut all of it out.
I would like to do the four because, uh, HYA, I mean, I, the, some of the things you guys were saying about it made me a little bit more interested, I guess.
And I, by the way, can't apparently, uh, do math, but this is, uh, 15 here, uh, School Exec Connect, so five and, uh, 10. So that's 15. So I, I mean, honestly, if you want to do, uh, I, I guess that's the question. I mean, the, this is the top four, uh, you know, definitely, um, I, do we have any interest in just narrowing it down to three?
I have interest in that. And, and not because of time sake, but because there's, there was a point difference between, there were three that are, are, are in the front and then there were those two that are four, that only, uh, one board member was really hot about. And I just, I just kind of feel like it's either three or five for me. And, and I personally, with the time that we have, I don't know if we want to do five. Or the lack of time, I should say.
Hold on, can you hold on one second? I just have to look at something.
Yeah, and if I recall, was HYA on the higher end of costs too?
Uh, yeah.
They were, that was the, the sort of the bigger downside for me in that the additional services were for extra, extra, and not just a small amount, like a lot of amount, so.
I say we go with three then. I was just trying to be diplomatic, but.
No, I, but honestly, we've got three, they're clearly the highest three. I, I, let's just, let's just go with that and save ourselves some hours.
I agree, uh, and I guess, you know, looking at what our, um, agenda is, um, I, I think that the, I will tell you that as I look at it now, board discussion on the process for selecting firms. Um, I, I don't know that we have to take a formal vote in order to extend it to the three, because all we're really doing is extending invitations at this moment. Um, but I, I guess, you know, Dr. Moser, what do you think? I, I think that we could just schedule interviews with the next three. Uh, I, I don't know if we need formal board action to do that.
No, you can tell me, uh, what, what you're telling me is, you want to go with three? Uh, I would contact the, the three that you're not interviewing and I will contact the three that you are interviewing. The next, and I would do that, be happy to do that, not a problem. The next question is picking A date or dates to do the interviewing. Now, the plus of doing A date is it's one date. The minus is three interviews for a search firm can be a long evening. Uh, and, and, uh, it, it, it's just like interviewing anyone. When you, uh, when you do that much interviewing, are you doing, uh, yourselves a disservice? Because whoever the third firm is, maybe you're, you're going to be worn out or you will forget what the first firm said.
Like in our regular school board meetings?
So, you know, if, if, if you do three, what you could do is do two, one night, one, another night, and then use the rest of the second night of interviews to review the interviews and make a decision on where you're going to go.
Um, only, the only concern I have about that is not saying it, it just puts one firm. If they're on call, they, this is an open meeting. They can hear what our questions are, um, tweak their presentation. Even though you, I just, I want them to be ready all at once. I, I, I.
I, may I, President Franklin?
Please.
Yeah, uh, I, your point is well taken, but I don't know how you're going to avoid that, if you're going to do this in the open. Um, where people are going to be able to listen. Um, even if you do it later in, in the same day. These are all firms that have interviewed many times, many places. I'm going to guess they've heard these questions before. Tamika, your point is well taken. And I still think that you, you, you have received high grades from the, the staff and from the, uh, the faculty and the public that you're doing things in the open. And interviewing, I think, can be done in the open, uh, for the search firm. I, I see the reason why it would not be done in the open. Uh, the only thing that would be, uh, that you would consider is your negotiations with the firm for the final salary or the final compensation you're going to pay them. That would, that could and probably should be done in executive session. But the interview, all the, the, the different points that are in the RFP, it's just, I think it's just fine, um.
May I, I, I point out one thing though, just to speak to Tamika's concern, which is, um, and maybe something that we're inadvertently skipping over, maybe it's our excitement, just the process moving. But should we have, and, and you and I discussed this, uh, as we tried to kind of telescope what the process was going to be, uh, going forward. But should we have, I'll, I'll ask, or we can maybe talk about it now. Uh, should we talk about how we want to standardize questions, uh, so that we can streamline the interview process? Uh, should we streamline it and should we have standardized questions, you know, for each of these search firms? And if so, should we be dealing with that today or at a different meeting?
I, if, if I may, President Franklin, I think that we do want to have a set of standardized questions that, uh, that would be prepared where you would, each board member could submit a, a, a certain number. Everybody could submit five questions. Uh, you can always, in fact, you should always be able to work off of those questions to find out more. You, 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 you never set yourself to just those questions that are standardized. Because something that a, a candidate or a search firm says will pique your interest and you want to probe that even more. But for, to have equity, uh, yes, you should have a, a standardized set that you, you look at. You may not ask them all, but, uh, having it standardized, maybe each one asking five is too many. Maybe we would, you know, each of you would submit three questions, uh, for a list, but I, I suggest you would do that. I don't think tonight is that night. Uh, I would suggest that you would, let's say you could submit those to me and I'll, I'll tally them. For, for the interview.
Well, you can, and then if my questions are similar to Molly's, you can cross one off and then it. Well, you can, and then, if my questions are similar to Molly's, you can cross one up, and then it narrows it down. I definitely do not want to ask five questions from each of us. Oh, that's just too many.
Your point is well taken, that if there are duplicates, because that's how you find out there are duplicates, is that they'd be, we would strike uh, similar questions.
Well, they're gonna have their own kind of presentation anyways, and they're gonna wanna start from.
That's right. The first part of your, of your, uh, interview with each of the firms will be, uh, their presentation. Yeah, that is.
Okay.
How long are we giving them on the presentation?
I, well, I think the interview should be between forty-five minutes and, uh, one hour. Um, and so the, the presentation can be anywhere from, uh, ten to fifteen minutes, uh, at the most.
I just, I, I, I like that you clarified that, cause somebody could do a half hour presentation, and we have a half hour to answer. Somebody could do a five minute presentation, and we have, you know, you know, forty minutes to ask questions, so. I think if it's standard, at least no more than fifteen minutes, then we kinda collectively have forty-five minutes to ask questions.
Yeah, I, I, I would agree.
You're taking half hour to forty-five minutes.
Yeah.
If, if, uh, if, if the presentation is too long, they will lose you. You will, uh, uh, you, you, you as a body, making the decision who you're, you're, you're gonna be thinking about uh, other things, like the questions you're gonna ask, if that, and, uh, they need to make their basic presentation, and then they'll get into what you really want to know about.
Okay. All right, then.
Chairman?
Wait, hold on, did someone else, I, I, I keep, uh, did someone say something besides you and me, Tamika? Oh, maybe I just heard something. Okay, go ahead, Tamika, I'm sorry.
Um, oh, no, I was gonna say, I thought I saw Teresa's hand, or she wanted to, I thought, I saw you move around, and I didn't know if you saw her or not, that's all.
Oh, no, I, 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 I didn't actually, I saw a text from her, uh, that she'd logged in, so I, I.
I'm here.
Then, okay, great. So Teresa, uh, to recap, uh, I don't know if you caught this part, but we're gonna extend invitation to McPherson, to Rain Associates, and School Exec Connect, uh, and, uh.
Can you repeat those? McPherson?
Sure.
School Exec.
Yeah, McPherson, yeah. McPherson, Rain, and Associates, and School Exec Connect. And you weren't here, but I did the best I could. I'm gonna share my screen again, just to show you what I did, cause I, I hope I make you proud here. Um, but that's what we did. Uh, we averaged, uh, things out. We made a little table here, um, based on total rankings, and so, um, the McPherson, Rain, School Exec Connect were the, the three consecutive, consistently highest, and, uh, we, we felt it would be a good idea just to kind of group them at that point.
Well, mine's an outlier on W A S B.
We laugh.
That's what we said.
But that's okay, because, you know, I, I also, a lot of these were very close. So, all right, so, i- i- in any event, I guess then the question becomes, we all have, uh, busy schedules, December is not a fun time anyways, but we have to, uh, schedule then these interviews, or at least come up with some blocks of time, uh, that we can do these interviews, so. I would just, you know, say, hey, tell me when you can and can't meet, and let's try to find something in the next, you know, in, in last week in November and first week in December, I, I guess, the week in November thirtieth, the week in December seventh? Is that what we're talking about?
President, uh, President Franklin, keep in, keep in mind that you identified that you would like to name the, the search firm by, during the week of December seventh through the eleventh. In, in our, at our last meeting, you said you wanted to pick the firm during that week.
Yeah. Which includes Friday the eleventh, so if we do something Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday, and then get together later in the week, we can name the firm on Friday the eleventh. I think we should give ourselves as much time as possible.
Okay, I'm just gonna be.
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, Daniel.
And I, I, I was gonna agree with Teresa and just point out the Monday that we already have several committee meetings, so it would have to be like the Tuesday.
On a Thursday? I mean, on the thirtieth?
December seventh.
Monday, December seventh, we have committee meetings scheduled.
Finance.
Yes.
Our communications has a working group, and I, there might be one other, I'm not even sure.
I think personnel a- a- and.
I think I have policy that day, too.
Yeah, I think there are three committee meetings that they.
Curriculum too.
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh.
All of them.
December seventh, we're not gonna have another meeting.
I don't know why you said earlier that December wasn't fun.
I actually would suggest we have these a week from today.
A week.
All of them?
The, 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 uh, thirtieth and the first. Oh, no, wait, let me look at this. Where's?
It is the thirtieth, a week from today.
Yeah, the thirtieth and December first. Cause the December first would have, we would have had a, and here's why, because out of you guys having that December, I'm also, um, doing police interviews for Police Commission on the sixth and the seventh, so I, that, that week is gone, is shot for me. Or, and you can do them without me, but that week is completely shot, and the reason I did it was because we had no meetings for it, and so they, when they asked, what are you free, I looked at both my other schedules and said, okay, we're free here. Um.
Yeah.
So I, I would suggest that you have to pick dates where all five of you can be there. This is, this is important, and all five of you have to be for the interview.
We, we didn't decide to do all three in one day, right?
We could.
Uh, but.
That hasn't been decided yet at that point.
They said no.
It was being advised against. A maximum two in one day, one on the subsequent day with discussion about all of them as the sort of second part of that day.
That makes sense. So even.
My only problem with Monday.
Week of December?
My, my only problem with the thirtieth, I mean, and possibly even the first, is, uh, I mean, I, I think that these firms do a lot of this, so I think they're gearing up to it, I think they're gonna be ready to do it, but it is Thanksgiving Thursday, and a lot of people are, you know, not doing things. Um, I'm not worried about travel, obviously, uh, but, uh.
What about the second, or the third, or the fourth? I mean.
What is our availa, what is our availability that week? Because if we are available the entire week, then we can offer up those day, or we can, we have some flexibility. We can offer two dates, but we have backup or.
I, I, I can, uh, offer anything, so whatever, yeah.
Now, our December board meetings are the sixteenth, but their earlier one is when?
Um.
I have that we have a meeting on the, do we have a meeting on the second?
That, that was usually our committee of the whole, but we're, we're not doing committee of the whole meetings anymore, because we're doing committee meetings.
So it shouldn't be, so.
We could do it on the second.
Yeah.
Because we already, we're gonna do committee of the whole anyways.
That's.
Do it on that Wednesday, Thursday, maybe?
Yeah. Oh, man.
Why don't we try two for Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday?
December first, second, and third?
Yeah.
Why do we need three days?
Well, you know, don't, don't you wanna see me three nights out of the week?
No.
Yeah.
No, I, not, not because I don't want to see you, but I have.
No, I'm honest, I don't.
I am looking to host a listening session for our website working group also that week, so I need to that date and get that information out, so I will work around what we decide.
If you want to try like two and one, or, you know, if you want, I just think three on one night's gonna be murder.
No, I think two nights. I think, I like Dr. Moser's suggestion, two nights.
Okay, so why don't we do two on Wednesday and one on, uh, the Thursday?
Okay. Okay, that works for me.
Great. Um, then, so we've got that, and I suppose the next thing is coming up with some standardized questions, which is something that Dr. Moser has graciously volunteered to, uh, assemble based on whatever we submit.
So, how many do you want to submit to me, each one of you? You want to submit three, five? Three, okay, each of you.
Three.
Submit three questions to me.
The three sort of general questions, is it okay then if we have, at least, if like, cause I have specific questions for some of these firms, just around specific services they offer? Um, do you want me to send you those, or kind of just keep those if those are not addressed throughout the interview and the present?
Why don't you keep those, because then you're, you're not gonna ask everybody that, just, yeah. The three questions would be three questions that could be asked of all firms, all three of them.
Okay.
But what time, uh, do you want to do the interviews? What time would you like to start?
Are we try, are we trying to keep them open to the public? I think that's what we heard previously, so.
Yes.
Six?
Six.
To eight, both nights?
Oh.
Six until we're done.
Yeah.
No.
It might be, uh.
We need to be done.
No, I'm talking about, cause we might be early, and if you say the eight, Andy gonna talk until eight.
No, I'm gonna talk till late thirty, but that's not the point. The point is that we need to have a break, we're gonna do two interviews in one night. Um, I think that what we need to do is, we need to have something like a six to seven, and then a seven fifteen to eight fifteen.
How about five thirty to six thirty, and then six forty-five to seven forty-five?
I like that.
Okay.
What did you say that again?
Five thirty to six thirty, fifteen minute break, six forty-five to seven forty-five.
Okay, and on the second night on December third, start it.
Same thing.
For the interview?
Yeah, same thing, five thirty to six thirty for the interview, fifteen minute break, and then another hour, six forty-five to seven forty-five to pick and choose.
I guess we have to have an executive session in there. Sorry, Molly, go ahead.
I, I just want to say something to this group, that it is very important that when we choose to adhere to these times, we have to adhere to these times. We cannot give one firm extra airtime, or give us extra airtime to talk to the firm. Someone has to be the timekeeper, someone has to keep us all in check, and we have to adhere to this one hour time, because that is not standardized when we let someone else go over.
I agree.
I'm happy to be the timekeeper.
We lay down the law.
I don't know if we, I don't know if we're allowed to refuse, that was.
It's just very important that we give everyone the same opportunity, so that we have to stick to that.
Do you have like a wrap it up clock, you know?
Yeah.
You're all getting five minute warning.
Andy, uh, when we go into, uh, when we do the six forty-five, uh, a time to discuss the candidates on December third, that's probably where we should go into executive session.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I agree. Um, and I'm not saying, you know, go in hide, but I think that before, you know, we, we go, if we're gonna take any action after, uh, listening to those three, then, you know, we, we, we need to at least to make sure that there are no issues that need to be discussed, uh.
Well, would we, I mean, I, as far as sort of negotiating or pri, or budget, as Dr. Moser suggested, that would be executive session, but then, talking about other assessments, our own assessments, could that be open, or what, I'm, you want it all closed?
I think it should be, because, right now, it might be part of, some of our reasoning might be part of negotiation of the money. It might be something, uh, and our decision making should definitely be in closed session when we're discussing this part of it, um.
Agreed.
Yeah, after we've gotten the proposals.
Do you, do the five of you want me to do any vetting of these three firms prior to your interviewing?
Yes.
Yeah.
How many, how many, uh, uh, reference checks would you like me to make on each of the three firms? Two?
Two?
I think two is good.
Yeah. I think it's a round number.
Thanks for offering.
Didn't all of them give lottery? Didn't all of them give three, though?
They did. But perhaps at his discretion, he could pick the, if there are districts that seem more like.
I'm happy either way, if you want me to do two, three, whatever, but I, I, I should have a, I could.
Personally, reference letters are just, oh my God, I did awesome. They're gonna say you did awesome, so it doesn't really matter. I guess two is fine.
Yeah, I mean, you don't write down references unless you know they're.
Yeah, unless you know what they're gonna say, so it's not like it's that big of a deal.
Right. Uh, it'll be more important to check the references of whoever the candidates are.
So.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't know that we need you to do that before interviews. Um, Elliot, I think it would be a good idea to do that, um, after our executive session on the third, if necessary.
But aren't we gonna make a decision and go back in possibly to make it, cause then we're gonna have to go back into another meeting and have another meeting day if we decide?
Yeah, I think let's just make sure that we do, uh, at the very least, a pro forma reference check before next week, so that there's no issues that pop up, uh, then we have that when we go into our discussions next week. And then we can have that executive session after and decide if we're gonna make that decision, and as early as Thursday evening, know where a search firm's gonna be.
Of executive sessions back in to, to announce.
Right, yeah, we'll go out of it to done, to an out, yeah.
But does that leave open the possibility of negotiating with, say, the top two? I mean.
I would, you know, and, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Say tentatively, then.
Yeah, listen.
If it's announced until they've accepted, sort of to Teresa's point, could we engage in negotiations and once it's final announced?
I think Teresa's point is well taken. Always give yourself that flexibility. If, if, uh, your negotiations fall apart, uh, or you're not happy with, uh, what the negotiations show, you, you have a fallback, and, uh, I think that's a good idea.
We have a fallback anyway.
Well, and then let me just explain, when I'm talking about selecting, uh, a firm, I'm not talking about, uh, finalizing contracts on Thursday night. Uh, I mean, I think that that's a, a separate issue that we have to look at, uh, but we'll probably also have, you know, greater insight on contract terms after we do the interviews, but, yes, we, I might, might, you know, oftentimes what you're able to do is you're able to select or downselect a firm, and, uh, once you know who you want to work with, uh, hammer out, uh, those details, once you know that's firm. That may not be the approach we want to have in any event, but I'm talking only about selecting the firm, not about finalizing the contract.
Well, I think it's important when we go into executive session to basically outline the questions that we want to get answered among ourselves. One, do we eliminate anyone? Um, two, um, if we don't eliminate anyone, who are our top two? And three, going forward, um, find out if there's a time that we can get together and negotiate, or push back to them with some kind of counterproposal, and then let them get back, and then go into executive session again to choose one of the top two.
Or we narrow it down to top two that night, so they'll at least know that there's two of them, if we, is that what you're saying? I'm asking, is that what you're saying?
Is anybody eliminated? If not, or, and if, choose top two, um, and then top two, or even top one for that matter, negotiate with that person, see how they respond, and/or negotiate with top two. But I think there's only two questions for the executive session on Thursday night. Anybody eliminated, and rank them for negotiation purposes at a later date. I don't, I don't think we're gonna be able to negotiate that night, right?
No.
Oh.
No.
So, I, I think that executive session Thursday night should be pretty quick and simple.
Yes.
And find another time to receive counterproposals from them, um, based on how we rank them and/or eliminate them.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah. Yep, I think that covers it. Okay, um.
Your wisdom is guidance, and guidance is just appreciated, Teresa.
You are most welcome.
Okay, so, Dr. Moser, unless I missed something, well, you're about to say something, so say something.
Yeah, I just wanna, with Teresa here, on a question that Molly asked me before, and I wanted Teresa to validate what I said.
Oh, yeah.
I was asked a question if, uh, School Exec Connect was involved in the search involving, uh, Dr. Mon. was involved in the search involving, uh, Dr. Monroe, was that correct, Molly? Was that your question?
Correct.
I answered no, uh, on the superintendent's search with, that was involving Dr. Monroe. And I said he was not involved in that search.
Um, I, I wasn't on the school board or involved in that at the time, so I don't know. I, I think you're, you're correct. Um, I think they might have been, um, tangentially involved when we hired Dr. Cabara, however, maybe for purposes of recommendations or references or, uh, that, this was two years ago. So, um, I'm, my recollections aren't clear, but, um, I think they did help out to some extent with that.
And that may answer the other question about what role they played in eighteen nineteen. That might answer that question.
I can, I can get a confirmation on that before we, um, come back together next week.
Sounds good.
Because I was going to say that they, School Exec Connect was, was involved in the, uh, the cooperative agreement between Nicolay and Fox Point in that School Exec Connect was the firm hired by Fox Point, um, at that time. But you, you may, I didn't think about Dr. Cabara's, um, reference checks and so forth. That, that may be more accurate.
Okay. All right, um.
I will notify the three firms that are not going to be interviewed. I plan to do it tomorrow. And I will, and I will contact the three firms that you're going to interview and set up the times. And I'll let you know, uh, how that goes and, and who's coming when, um.
Okay.
Great.
All right, then, uh, is it time to move along to visitor participation, Dr. Moser?
Yes.
Okay, then. Visitor participation. Uh, if you have a, uh, comment that you'd like to make, please raise your hand. Uh, comments will be limited to three minutes. Uh, if someone said something previously, try to focus on the difference in your statement. Uh, and I'll give everyone a chance to raise their hand. Um, we have one person to start, so I guess I will call on Amanda Seligman.
Thank you, Andy. Hi, Amanda. Amanda Seligman, seventy-one twenty North Brayburn Lane. Um, I, this being the week of Thanksgiving, I actually just want to extend my thanks to all of you who are school board members um, for your, what seems like really tireless work on behalf of the community. I'll look at Andy's blushing. Um, I, 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 um, I've been coming to these meetings and just listening and it's a, you guys are doing a ton of work. Um, so I just want to say thank you.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So much.
Okay, is there anyone else? All right. I'll give people a moment, going once, going twice. And with that said, I think we've covered everything and so this is week Thanksgiving. So I want to say thank, uh, to everyone for coming here. I am very grateful for this awesome board that we have and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Tamika?
No.
You're killing me.
This motion is adjourned, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you to everyone.
Have a good night, everyone.
That I did not want to leave.
Good night.
Yep, good night.
Good night, everybody.
Thanks so much. Okay, bye-bye.